All of our friends, guests, and colleagues. Um, we're gonna open a meeting and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, or my mission undergone, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. I'm Kerry John, Vice President of the School Board, sitting in for Teresa Ray, President, who was not available for tonight. First order is the improvement or approving of the agenda. Do we have any changes?
There are no changes to the agenda, but as Mr. John just noted, Mrs. Ray is excused.
Okay. Eyes for motion to approve the agenda.
Motion.
Second.
motion by Barb, second by Dale. Questions, comments? On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. What's your carry? Okay, item three, recognitions and presentations. We're gonna start with the school safety and reopening plan. I assume Dr. Beal, you're gonna take it away?
Yes, thank you, Mr. John. There is actually quite little to report regarding our school practices, which I'll take as good news. We continue to closely work with the Cataragius County Health Department and to monitor the rate of COVID-19 transmission throughout our community. Next week, the New York State mandated testing for all employees that do not opt out will begin, but I'll leave that to Mr. Breidenstein, who will be discussing that in his upcoming remarks. Tomorrow, there are two safety and wellness meetings at Prospect Elementary School where the ongoing monitoring of the mold issue from August to September will be discussed. I'm pleased to inform the board that surveillance testing of the air at Prospect from last week indicates that there is no continuous proliferation of mold. I also want to thank our Transportation Department for the great work they've been doing since last June. Last week, I heard reports of several school districts that simply could not transport their students due to shortage of drivers. Parents were asked to drive their students in or time classes remotely. Due to the hard work and dedication of our head bus driver, Bob Finch, our bus drivers, mechanics, and even the clerical staff at the bus garage, we have not had to cancel any student activities due to the statewide driver shortage. So I just wanted to once again extend our gratitude to our Transportation Department for the great job that they do every day. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? All right, let's move on to like need presentation from New England Right Building Condition Survey and Long Range Facility Plan. So Mrs. McGarry, would you like to do the honors of introductions?
Sure. Tonight, we have Alyssa and Sean with us to discuss the building condition survey that we started. Geez, when did we start? May, I think. And this is the first step of it being the building condition survey that they've done. And then we'll start in a couple of weeks, or actually, I think it's next week, we have our first meeting in regards to the long-term capital planning. So Alyssa and Sean are gonna show you a presentation. And they met with Mark and Bob and I last, two Fridays ago. And we went over the whole, they gave us an iPad that has the entire building condition survey on it. And it's really cool. It's like, like Mark and I were both like, this is like the sweetest thing ever. But you can, you know, bring up anything, you know, bring up this room and you can look and see what needs to be replaced and how much it would be and all that kind of stuff. And there's pictures of every, every location and descriptions of it and stuff. It's very, very cool. So I'm sure Alyssa's gonna
Technical difficulties.
Absolutely. Good thing you've got two people here.
Quick, Karen, add eleven.
Add them. Okay, well, um. Today's Tuesday.
You were saying that I was kind of excited by it.
Yeah.
What you're gonna see is actually a database that all of this information is in, which is different than just the paper format that we typically receive it in. It's searchable. The more familiar you are with the manipulation of a database, the easier it is to actually access. But now we have photos and you're gonna see all of this, but the things that sort of got us excited were that along with the report, we see images, we see evidence that can back it up. And instead of having to go out and take a look at a roof, take a look at vents, take a look at piping, we can sit, bring it up on a device, we can have, share that with everyone and actually see the images of exactly what we're talking about. So there's no confusion. And that works on multiple platforms. So you're gonna see it being presented on an iPad. But the database is actually shared with us in its raw format. So we've already put that on our shared server. And I can pick that up on any device that runs the software. So ease of use is absolutely terrific. Hopefully.
Yeah, some of them can't show it on here.
We have it up.
Well, we have it on that screen. We're sharing it through the Zoom meeting though.
I hear you sometimes.
So Karen, how about you explain us a little bit about the meeting for the upcoming presentation or meeting you were talking about?
On the ninth.
You just were talking about our long range plan.
Oh, yeah. Alyssa and Sean are gonna sit down with us and maybe we get the bridge to people and it's really kind of brainstorm. And where are we going? You know, like we just finished phases one and two of our capital projects. We finished phase three, one and three, two. We're in design, ready to almost go to state with three, three. So what does three, four look like? What does phase four look like? What does phase five look like? Where are we going in the future with this? So really, it's kind of a, kind of a planning, kind of a slash dreaming. Where do we want to go? Do we want to build a, you know, a new early childhood learning center? Do we want to build a health facility? Do we want to build, you know, where do we want to go with this? And, and kind of get a game plan that we've been lacking?
Right. Would you, can you write it up?
To not only figure out where we're going, but how much it's gonna cost and how we can make that happen based on the monies that we have now and what we anticipate in the future. Yeah. So it'll be, it'll be interesting to see how that whole process unfolds through this whole VCS process. These guys have been fantastic. We had Zoom meetings. Geez, I think it was like almost weekly for a while. And then they sent their entire team out here. They called them the blue shirts and they came out and just basically were all over the place. And they were in every single room. They had electrical and mechanical and plumbing and all kinds of different engineers in here to take a look at everything. Instead of, you know, somebody like you that picks up the phone and says, hey, I need this fixed. So, um, I think we're ready. And they can give you all the nitty gritty.
Right.
Thank you.
Actually, you really covered it. We just have pretty pictures to say.
Sean, listen, before you start, Mercy, do you need me to bring that up and share it on my screen so the audience can see it? Are we projecting?
We are not projecting out, and that's the issue is I can't get that projected.
Okay, so I'll bring it up on my screen and then we'll share your scene.
Mark's got it. Zoom in, Mark.
Yeah.
I appreciate all that. Thank you. They're all instantly solving the problem.
Well, actually, I think everybody should be able to see it right now. I mean, it's not gonna be huge, but it'll suffice, I believe.
Okay.
Oh, we already got a really good intro.
Yeah, well, Karen, thanks so much for the intro. So, you know, we have to bring up our faces because we're all, you know, very advanced nowadays. So I'm Sean Wright with Young and Right Architectural. Alyssa Callan is one of my associates and also our, we call her our fit expert. She's a long-term planning specialist for, for most of the districts that we, we provide this service for. So questions at any time. If you think of something, you see something, you hear something, please don't, don't hesitate to interrupt because we, we, we prefer it that way. We don't want you to forget your questions. We'll take the time to stop and pause and do that.
So Karen already nicely introduced our, the team that was out here and kind of told you a little bit about how long we were here. If you work in any of the buildings, you've probably met some of our blue shirts and hear your door open and closed a number of times as each person looks at a different trade when they're in the building. We were on site for about six months. We had a lot of meetings. These guys were on site in your buildings for about a month. Basically combing from roof to basement, every area and all of your site, looking at each of the items that we asked them to look at. And the team makeup, we've got a whole bunch of experts out here, current and on a bunch of them, cannibalistic plumbing, civil, and then there's architects that specialize in a myriad of things. So the person who was looking at your roofs has looked at over 30 million square footage of roof in Western New York. So you had real experts out in your facilities and you can really trust the data that you're gonna see. And ultimately, it comes down to each one of these spaces to really present good data to you guys. So this, this is the team that we bring out and we are really proud to introduce you guys to them because their quality of the data comes down to these individuals.
As Karen kind of mentioned, this is kind of the first step in the long-term planning processes, gathering as much information as we can about your existing facilities. So when you typically submit the report that the State Education Department requires, there are 86 categories that they ask us to review on their behalf. Okay? What we discovered over the years, we've been doing this, is that it's not always all the categories that are interesting to you. So we've added 40 categories that were basically everything that, you know, anyone has ever asked us to analyze. And it really started with questions like, well, how come you didn't, you know, how come you didn't rate the cabinets in your, our science rooms? The doors are falling off and nobody picked that up. Well, it was, it wasn't something that was on the state required test. Or, you know, the, the report. So we added those things. And these are some examples of some of those additional categories that we've added to the system.
And some of these probably look like things that you would want when you're thinking about starting to put together a 10-year plan for your building and your, your facilities. These are important things, things like your IT. So the state hasn't necessarily caught up with all the IT changes that we've seen in schools. Spaces in your building, so libraries, classrooms, cafeterias, kitchens, all of that is evaluated by our team. You can see a list of a whole bunch of other fun ones. If you have a rock wall, we're gonna evaluate your rock wall and beauty one. But all of these are things that we'll take a look at while we're on site. We also document your existing concerns. So we work with Rich and a team from each building to hear all the concerns about the building before we came out. So we walked with Rich and said, hey, what's going on at this building? He downloaded all of that information to us. And then the team that came out, those blue shirts, were aware of all of those issues. So everything that he has in his head and all of that existing knowledge was captured prior to our team coming out. And then we embedded that in all of the data that was collected. So anything he knew we needed to get done, that's been captured as part of the survey.
There's a lot of things like, you know, evaluating roofs when you have a dry sun, you know, sunny summer, very difficult to figure out where the leaks are. So having that information from Rich is very, very useful in helping us. In addition to that, we start by collecting all of your existing rights, everything we can get our hands on, putting it all into a database and putting it into a, into a library that you'll be able to use. We find this to be very, very valuable. And I think you guys saw the demonstration and Alyssa's actually gonna demonstrate it for you right now, what that looks like.
This is a fun part, if you wanted to look up at the screen. So basically what you can do now with all of the rolls that you had up, you kind of rolled up in a basement and nicely organized in your case. But now they're all digital. So you can say, okay, you know what? I want to look at the intermediate high school. And you know, okay, here's all of the years of projects that occurred. Maybe I want to look at the 1955 original drawings. And then you can see each page of those drawings. So maybe you're looking for the elevations from the original drawings. And you can pull that up and within a few seconds, be in the drawings. Maybe you're trying to figure out the height of the old rifle range below the gym for when it was originally constructed. That's the information that you can get to in five seconds rather than having to get all the way in the basement, pull out seven year rolls before you find the one you're looking for and then pull up the information you're looking for. So this is something, this is the gift that keeps on giving for many, many years. This is something that Rich and the entire team here can use to solve problems quickly. We find that people, we do turn over all this data on an iPad to you guys. And I know that your team is pretty excited about that and also pretty excited about adding the same information to other district iPads that already exist. And so this can all be put on those iPads and really distributed anywhere to allow problem solving to be a little bit easier on the facilities, I think.
We find that many, many facilities, people carry this around in their vehicle. And they have access to all of the drawings that would have normally been in a drawing room somewhere in the district. And they have access to it. We've also found that in many emergencies, we've heard that this has been very useful in finding plumbing valves that need to be shut off when there's a leak or, you know, various markups and things like that that you want to send on to somebody. You can mark them up right on these plans. You can send them off in an email and, and speed up the process.
Any questions on that, just for the presenting? Pretty useful database. All right.
So the, the other, the other difference between what we provide and what is required of the building condition survey, the State Education Department's building condition survey just asks you to, you know, they pick a system and they just say, we just want a rating on the system as a whole throughout the entire facility. Well, what they don't always recognize is that your facility may be made up of buildings that are from different eras, your original buildings and a number of additions. So we provide that evaluation for each of those eras or at least every, any time a system has been changed.
And what that means to you, so when we talk to you, we're gonna look at your data and show you examples of it. But for example, if you search the database for windows, you wouldn't necessarily just get one return in that query. You would get a whole bunch of information back about all the different years of windows that you have at that. You know, three or four different eras, you'll have all of those different eras of windows returned. And the real value in that is that when you go to put that 10-year plan together, what you're doing is saying, okay, so the windows from, you know, 1928 are in much worse shape than maybe the windows that were installed in 2011. They'll have different costs to replace them, there'll be different quantities. And you can use that information to plan out your 10 years and prioritize which windows to replace at what time.
So in the end, and Alyssa's preparing here for, and she's gonna demonstrate the actual system that we use, the database program that we use to do that. You may find that, you know, there are 86 categories that the state is asking us to, to provide information on. We've added 40 more, but in most of the buildings that you'll find, you're gonna see here, for instance, there's 339 different records. And that has to do with the fact that each of the different eras of various buildings or the different systems were all evaluated separately. So that you have good, good data and we can build, build your long-term plan.
So this is the database. And I think Mark could probably present it as well as I can. I'm pretty excited about it. But I'll give you a brief intro. It's kind of clear, hopefully, what's going on. So we have some photos of the system that we're looking at. We have a floor plan showing you exactly where that system is. There should be no question. In this case, we're looking at windows, aluminum windows from 2006. There shouldn't be any question as to exactly where those windows are in your building. You'll see exactly where they are on the floor plan. On the left-hand side, we have a whole bunch of kind of type text information. But if you break it down, you can start to see that it says the year that they were installed, the quantity of the overall system, the condition. This is kind of like a red light, green light system. So yellow somewhere in the middle. Then a remaining useful light. So in this case, it's indicating five years. You'll see a series of comments. We're in your buildings for a long time. We're gonna put down any information that we hope will find, you will find useful. And then here in the bottom left-hand corner, you'll see a recommended replacement scope associated with that item. So if we thought that there was something that needed to be replaced about the system, we would indicate it here, give you a quantity, a cost, and total that up. So in this case, we're looking at windows. I'm gonna flip through a few records just to show you an example of different types of entries that can be associated with that. So then you saw before we were looking at the 2006 windows. Now here, we're looking at the 1991 windows. We can see where each of those are. If you wanted to see more photos, maybe you're curious of what that looked like. There's always another tab that you can go to. It has a series of additional photos. You can start to see the condition and the types of windows. So again, even if you didn't know maybe where the 1991 windows were on the floor plan, you might have your memory jogged by seeing the visuals. So if those, you'll still see that cost and replacement scope associated over here, in this case, replacing the windows. I'll keep going. Just another example that, so now you're looking at very new windows. You can see that that yellow is no longer there. We're saying it'll be at least 10 years. So there's no cost associated with that. But we're still throwing you on the floor plan where those are. And then there are still additional photos on the zoom into them. So where this gets really fun is that you can look up anything you want. You can pull anything up. You can, you were quick query. Maybe, let's see, you guys have geothermal. We click that in. We can pull up that system and start to look at the parts of that and what some of the associated work may or may not be with that piece. So in this case, we're looking at the geothermal system. You can see there's some yellow there, cost associated here clearly describing what it is. In this case, we're looking at the pumps. If we go through a few more records, again, you can see some more pumps here, different pumps that are associated with that, that also have a cost called out. You can see on the floor plans here that we use red when we find something that doesn't need to be replaced. So you'll see that indicated in red. If we saw it in blue, then it would mean that it didn't need to be replaced, it's in good condition too. Again, you can start to see some more of those costs associated with that. Anybody have anything on the search or something they want to see? That's really where this gets exciting. Is when you, when you're talking about something and not everybody can remember what it looks like, but we can pull it up. Everybody can get on the same page, see what it is, where it is, exactly how many we're talking about. So when we get into this planning process, and trust me, that will help them. People will wonder what roof are we talking about or what windows? And then we can pull it up, look at the cost that it would be to replace it and start to use that to build that long-term plan.
How detailed does it go down to your light fixtures?
Yeah. Yep, that's a good question. So we have, we have exterior and interior and then the different eras associated with that. So in this case, you have, there must be LED lighting. You think that's a good example of that red and blue. LED lighting here and here. And then there's a general replacement to comment called out for replacing the existing fluorescent light with LED lights. That's something that on a district-by-district basis, it's really an energy saving. So often, lights don't necessarily not work. When they do, it's kind of one or two. But on a system-wide basis in your building, it's kind of a question on an energy, is there, you know, an energy saving that you want to realize by converting the LED in the building? We've indicated the areas that do and don't have that.
Not only energy savings, but also in disposal, waste disposal. LEDs are not considered hazardous.
Yeah.
So that's a cost savings as well.
Excellent. And then we've also got some of the other areas outside of your building. You can also see that there is a mix of LED and HAD fixtures. And you've indicated exactly which fixtures are still capable of being replaced and upgraded to LED.
That's really nice.
Yeah, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. Good question.
I'm sorry. Can you bring up restrooms?
Sure. This is where it gets fun. All right. So we've got some restrooms here that we were showing in blue. This is also where you guys may decide that it's something that you do want running. Maybe the pink hue isn't necessarily your favorite or something to that effect. Totally your call. But in our case, we didn't see any, you know, obvious signs of deterioration or anything that would be. So this is where we get a little bit into the subjective nature of things. But you can still see that since it is subjective, we put a renovation of the Disney restroom in here with the cost. So while it's not something that we're flagging as urgent or, you know, you can see it's not in yellow up here from like it's not a satisfactory or harmful condition. No student is gonna walk in here and have any issues using the stores. And that's the case, but we'll still give you the costs associated with that. We also have a whole bunch of other bathroom training facilities that we'll show up here too, different records for different areas. Anything you were looking for specifically?
Uh, no, just that everything that you can imagine on the list is on the list.
As you, as you can see, you know, this can be useful in your conversations because it's so easy to pull up the photos of the different areas, take a look at them together without having to tour them, you know. It'll save you those trips to the roof in December and things like that when, you know, someone brings up the leak in the roof or a question on the roof. Roofs is a good, yeah.
Alyssa, that related to the restrooms, does it show us which ones are not ADA compliant and which ones are?
That's actually a whole separate record, but we do look at all the ADA accessibility around your entire building from your outside in your parking lots all the way into the building. And then to the bathrooms, we look at auditoriums, make sure they're receiving there as well. So we have a whole breakdown on that as well. And while we're here looking at roofs, I can show you just a little bit about that. So you can kind of see the areas of roofs in your facility that have concerns. So red would indicate, okay, we've got an area of concern. You can see some of the reasonings for that, just in, although some of the ballaces have been removed entirely in some of the built-up roof areas. So some concerns with those upcoming. We do however have some areas here that's a newer section of EPC roofing from 2018. Others here, some more EPC from 2019. You guys have done some roofing here. But then there's still areas that do have a little bit of a different vintage, 2007, same thing. Some built-up roofing that should be on the docket here in the next five years or so. So lots of them. But the fun is really starting to transition this into a long-term plan. So this is what the effort that has been mostly focused for the last five months is collecting all this information, making sure that it had its QAC done all top notch and ready for your use. Now we're at the point, we're gonna talk a little bit about kind of what's to come in the next few months, looking forward into long-term planning, working together on that. Unless you guys have any other questions on this, but.
So that is, it's the, the phase of the project that we use to collect all of the information, collect all the data, put it all into this raw format. And now the next steps are diving into the, the long-term planning process. Okay? And this process can vary depending on how every, every district works, whether it's, you know, by certain types of committees, certain type of people that you want to have involved and things like that. And the first step gets into taking all that data that we have and then also adding to it some of the things that we know that you may want. Things that might be educational programs, things that might be, uh, things that don't exist right now. Okay? Because you gotta remember that the building condition survey is only evaluating exactly what you have right now, not what you want. Not, not spatial needs, not, you know, new facilities and things like that. And so we want to sit down and as Karen kind of pointed out, brainstorm a little bit as to what those items look like. What are some of the other things that you want to consider as you're building your long-term plan? Because once we have an idea of what they are, we can help you to put a cost to them. It's always, always easier to talk about different items. We can have some form of a cost associated with them. And then you can combine the two together to build the long-term plan. And Alyssa's gonna demonstrate for us a little bit the process that we, we use it.
Yeah, so that process that Sean just talked through will help us create a list. Both of the building condition survey items and the district items that you guys would like to see happen around here. Kind of the fun and the honey-do list at the same time. And then we'll work to prioritize that, you know, we'll talk about roofs and some of those fun new ideas and where they relate to each other and get them in a priority. The goal of that will be to look out seven to 10 years. So we'll look from right now out seven to 10 years. And we'll look to plan for different types of projects. So whether we're looking at capital outlines and what items we can pull off the list in each of those. Maybe we're looking at grant funds, persa, maybe we're looking at SIR, SIRDO, smart schools. And starting to put those on a timeline, what items from our list make sense to pull out into those. What year do they make sense to do in? Maybe we're looking at some smaller maintenance projects, things that are on the list that don't make sense to put in the capital project, but do make sense to put on a schedule from a maintenance perspective. And of course, we'll look at capital project planning too, aligning that with debt service. If that's something that's important to you guys, of course, working with your financial advisor, ACV, any maximum cost allowance that those maybe need to look at. But the goal is to take all of the information and then work with your team to put it into a formal analysis. And I'll tell you that that sounds very simple and I can say it in four minutes. It will take us plenty of time. And there will be a lot of involvement in that process. So it's something that I'm very much so looking forward to working on with you guys. We both are. And it's a, it, every process takes a little bit of a different shape. So really, the next meeting that we have with you guys, with your administrative team, is to talk about what should that process look like for sound makeup. So that's what we're excited to have here is kind of how that process should look and where we take the data and start to transition it to a long-term plan.
Those are our next steps. Is to develop that process that works for you. And then also to, to continue to probably come back here and demonstrate some of the progress that we're making along the way. And in the end, the goal is not just to identify, you know, we have to do a project, this is what needs to be done, but basically to kind of outline your future a little bit. Lay out a path towards with, you know, being financially, you know, sound and also putting things in the right timeframes as to when they make sense to be done.
Let's see, what questions you guys have for us? Well, we've been having a lot of thank you for, a lot of this during your team and your staff. It's all been incredibly accommodating of our blue team, which is not always the case. So you can give a shout out to all of your building staff and say thank you for making this process very easy on us, Rich especially. Has been a huge, huge help in getting this, this part done. It doesn't always go incredibly smooth. And I would tell, tell you guys that our entire team at the office wants to work at Salamanca because your team made it so incredibly enjoyable to be in your facility. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
No questions or comments. Moving on to communications, public communications and Title Six, Karen advisor. Sign in. Do we have anyone from Title Six? Sorry, did you say something? Oh, no, nobody's on one.
All right. So no one for Title Six. I'll just brief update. We did have a meeting last week. We had a good number in attendance and we talked about a lot of issues and a lot of, or not issues, but topics. And looking at some more long-term planning, seeing how we can more or less help with furthering the children or the students' education. So hopefully we'll have a little more updated the next meeting from Title Six. Let's go to central office. Karen, you want to start?
Sure. Um, couple things. Mark stole my thunder already with the national or with the transportation crew. I was going to say the same thing essentially. And also this is a national school bus safety week. So make sure you're not passing any buses or any silly like that. Tailgating down or anything like that. Um, the other thing I have to offer is for food services for November. We are going to have a couple of folks from Gafio coming over and cooking some corn soup for our kids. They're going to be at Prospect on one day and High School Seneca on a different day. We haven't established what those days are yet, but John's been in communication with them to get some data foods in here, especially for November. And then we're talking about like once a month to just bring something different in. So the kids can give it a try and, and educate them so much more on, on what we're getting here.
Very cool.
That's two things I have.
Yeah.
Awesome.
I'll be relatively short. I just wanted to express my gratitude to our school board. This is school board recognition week. I think it's important to recognize that there are only a few governmental entities that are strictly voluntary. School board being probably the most prolific and the most recognized. And it's important to note that the service that you provide is a hundred percent voluntary. And I don't know as though people recognize that and respect that to the level that they probably shouldn't. And I just wanted to express my gratitude to the work that you do in and out every day to ensure that Salamanca is the best place it can be.
Thank you.
That's it.
That's it.
Oh, okay. All right. Let's start with Dale, D O E.
I like, I like to also express my gratitude and appreciation for all my fellow board members who's been enjoying serving with you guys over the past several years. And, uh, it's, it's, it's a, it's a very important job that we have, you know, to, you know, to help guide the, the, the district in the, the direction that we need to. And I just want to share my appreciation.
Thank you. Also thank, thank you to Dale and Mark for the kind words and for the gifts that we received tonight. It's truly a pleasure to serve on the board and like Dale, I've enjoyed my 11 years here.
Thank you.
Yes?
Well, I want to say thank you as well. This is quite a, something to come walking into and it's always nice to, to be amongst a group of like, thinking Mark, Dale, Barb volunteers. And I really don't believe that a lot of people really realize that there is no salary. There's no fringe or extras. It's just, it's just a lot of really, a lot, a lot of reading I've learned. I've only been a part of this for a short period of time. And I just want to say thank you to all of you and I have still a lot to learn. And I look forward to our future retreat. And I also want to give the sentiments to our bus crews. And it is safety week. I just had a safety class today. So I, I just want to make sure everybody is being safe out there. And, uh, yeah, just thank you.
Brad?
I also want to say thank you for all the love with the gifts that we receive and express my gratitude for the opportunity to serve on the board.
Oh, I, I kind of wanted to disagree about our pay. I'm six and a half years in. Barb, Barb still got us all. But the pay is, is pretty rewarding. And what it is, is it's helping this district move forward. It's helping our kids achieve more, do better, become successful. That's why we're here, you know, and that's, that's what I look at. I knew coming in that there's no monetary value, but I also knew being married to an educator for quite a while. There's a lot more to it, you know, and I think if, if we really didn't want to or had the heart to make change and help our kids, we wouldn't be here. So I, I just like to put it that way. It's the reward that you have. Um, that's all I had, but I did, I did want to do something else. And we have some principals here. So I wanted to give a second of my time here to hear from the principals. We always get central office. We always hear from superintendent. Let's hear from Chris and Gil seeing this out here. What you guys got? And Lynn, what you guys got? Let's go first.
I'll go first. I went from high school, you know, just generally speaking, the year is was challenging in the beginning, obviously coming back after a year and a half kind of hiatus, uh, you know, there was, there was a learning curve. I think now as we're hitting October, you know, we're firing on a lot more cylinders and things are improving every day across the board. Love seeing the kids in the hallway, love greeting them in the morning as they come in. So when you say, you know, being on the school board is rewarding for what you guys do, obviously our jobs, although we get paid for it, very rewarding. We don't do it for money. For those relationships we built.
So. Dale?
So we had a hiccup to start, but I feel like we've come through that with the flying colors. We're really looking closely at how we have to adjust things to meet students' needs where they're at. And have real honest conversations about the fact that some of our kindergartners have never been in a grocery store. Have never been exposed to a lot outside of the home because of being in the home environment during COVID for so long. And then also talking about some of the deficits created in reading and math from trying to learn via Zoom. So we've been working on changing interventionist schedule to maximize that, make sure we're providing all that we can. It's been exciting to eat in the cafeteria again and have our lunch centers going again. The kids, first week, it was tricky with the trays. A lot of them hadn't been in the cafeteria before. If you figure our third graders are the only ones that had a full year in that building before. So they have never, a lot of them have never experienced that. So it's been a lot of new learning. But the kids are doing great. The staff is doing a phenomenal job. We're just trying to make it fun and the kids, I think, are enjoying coming to school every day. So we're doing our job.
Awesome. Well, I'll, I'll keep you rolling here. Go ahead and introduce the assistant principal. I don't know, in case people haven't met before.
This is Kimberly. She's the new assistant principal over at Pathic. She's been doing a great job. Really being an ample part of hosting and cafeteria, especially beginning of the year and jumping in with observations and things like that. So we both believe strongly that it's all about the relationships you build with kids. So everything that we do, our philosophy is from that. So just, I think a great environment within the building. Enjoying working.
Kim?
Yeah, no, absolutely. I totally agree. I, I worked in a lot of different schools throughout my career up to this point. And this is like a team and a, and a mindset like I haven't experienced before. So I'm enjoying every single day. I love it. I, my ride home, I have a little bit longer of a ride, but I reflect every day and I feel so fulfilled and so grateful to be part of such a dynamic team. So it's, yeah. I'm loving it. Thank you for having me.
Awesome. Back to Lynn.
And I love it too. As Mr. Secret said, you know, it took some time, I think, for when we got, when we started back full time and kids really had to get into the, to the upper, the groove as we all did. It's been, as you all did, you know, there's, you're always going to have, you know, some problems and some challenges along the way. And I can definitely see that our kids did lack some time without us and we're getting back to where we were, I think. It's, it's, it's rocky, but I mean, it's, it's so much better than it wasn't before. And I love being here and I, and I said when we were all out, that I just want all the kids to come back and have perfect gift, other classes. Okay, so guess what? Who says it? But, but they're here and that's what's important. They're here with us. So I, I like that.
Awesome.
It was, it was a learning, I don't want the learning curve, but it was getting back into the swing of it for us too. I mean, last year, I mean, our day was really nine to two with the kids and now we're like seven thirty to three thirty. So there's quite a few hours more. So, yeah, I was tired that first week.
Awesome. Well, let's keep going. Penny, what do you got for us?
Okay, well, I just think you guys, the principals are saying that I've been working very closely with our instructional coaches. We've had, we've had on-site PD, like probably through the summer and then after school. And this summer, a lot of our, our grade levels are created, they look at data, they created action plans off of data that we had from the end of last year. With this, it's doing work. And then we, we have started our first data meeting, like, so they create these action plans. So that's the first follow-up. And now we look at the new, we bring in student data. We have our coaches there. We talk about deficits, what are we doing for those kids that are struggling, which we have a lot of fun. So what are we going to do for the kids that need to be challenged as well accelerated? What we've been doing is creating new action plans from now until January. And we're scheduling our instructional coaches to go in and do modeling for the teachers in the classroom with the the teachers, the coach, both they agree, the coach, the staff, the teachers. Do things like lessons for them. That's kind of a lot of what my time has been spent on outside of
Awesome. Marcy?
Um, well, this has been a huge learning curve for me because I started this job with no kids in the building. And now there are kids in my office all the time requesting stuff, checking in. I see one gentleman who walked by the door earlier. He's in my office every day to say hi and I love it. I have so missed the kids and I didn't know how much I missed them. But we've been making great strides and adding to what we've had before. So you see an RT here, there's another one someplace for this room specifically, and they will get mounted. We're waiting for equipment to come in, finish that. So refurbishing this room, our auditorium. We have a Zoom room that's getting added in over at Seneca in the library. We have, we're one-to-one PK 12 and we have been for a while, but with COVID, we left everything out there with the kids. So if they wanted to do learning over the summer. And everybody was so worried about it. And yet, when the kids came back, I can tell you every reason, you're going to lose all of your devices. Everything's going to be broken. I started the year with 160 brand-new devices in my office, 100, but second grade, I still have 30 devices. Now we've repaired some, we used a bunch of the senior devices and things like that. A lot of devices went out of staff. But our kids really did take care of our stuff, their stuff, took care of their stuff. And it was just awesome to see that they, they cared that much about what they had and they, they report in to help that. So if there's an issue, I have kids that will reach out or not just stop in the office because they want to say hi, but they'll come down and lock on the door. Hey, I can't do this or this isn't working. And I love that. Like I can't wait till it's more open and they can be in there, sitting in there on a regular basis, doing stuff with their techs. We do have one gentleman that is doing an entrepreneurial show. And he's over in our office for about an hour, three days a week. And the techs have him tearing apart devices, replacing keyboards, replacing screens. I love to have kids in there all day long doing that kind of stuff. We want to start doing tech Tuesdays again, and I don't want to be the face of the video. So I'm trying to enlist some of our students to be the ones that tell you that if you hit the Windows key and outlet locks your screen or you hit Windows and semicolon, it gives you all the emojis and literally the ones, a little that one of the first ones on the list with kids to hang out with. But it is, it is really fantastic. And we're really looking forward to a lot of professional development on a very basic level. Because I think, I know as a teacher, they handed me a device years ago and expected that I would know how to use it. And I have spent years learning how to do everything that I know how to do. And I'm one of the few people that like, if I don't understand something, I'm running to find somebody and saying, show me, show me how to do this. So I really want to provide a lot of basic, basic technology to all of our teachers, all of our kids, because I think we're missing that stuff at this point. They can all get on Zoom. They can all get on the unified classroom. They can, you know, add stuff to Dropbox, but they can't process this. So that's really where I want to head is building that foundation. And I agree, Mark, crazy on a database. So I'm
It's well worth it. The Windows semicolon, that is super cool. No more words, just emoji.
Yeah, it is, isn't it?
Levi? What you got for us?
Been busy with PowerSchool, trying to get cross-stuff updated with their electronic report cards instead of getting away from their previous Excel spreadsheet. So the OSIS tech that we have that we have an extended package with has been down several days. Working with Gale and Kim and then Nikki and Aaron over at Seneca to get grades PK through six to the electronics grade book and just getting those report cards revamped so we can roll those out for secondary for the first 10 weeks and then prospect for the second. Which one are we, other than that, I mean, things are going well, teachers. It seems like they're using the grade book and keeping grades updated. We've been trying to push more towards the students of downloading the portal, the PowerSchool app. So when a teacher marks them absent, they get notification on their app, which quickly return their, you know, communicating with that teacher that, hey, I'm here in the building. Right? Sign down to study hall and went here. But hopefully it's been getting them more on task with their grades. As soon as a teacher changes the grade of a student, that push notification goes out to them. So they're a little bit more parents know what's going on, but other than that, don't know. Let's hear her feedback in the buildings.
Awesome. Well, thank you. Appreciate you all indulging me there for a few minutes. Any chances, Nikki on the line?
Um, she's not.
No, okay. All right. Well, let's move on to the next one, superintendent message. So, uh, thank you. I have several items and I apologize upfront, uh, at least one or two of them are a little bit lengthy. But the first one is just to recognize our board members. And we, we joke and we kid and this is really one of the hardest working boards I've ever seen in my career. They listen, they ask questions, they ask tough questions, they ask fair questions. They ask questions that maybe we hadn't thought of because they have a deep intimate knowledge of both the district and the community and many of our families. And that serves as an invaluable resource to our administrative team to make the types of decisions that make everyone's job a lot easier. There are boards that show up, vote, and that's it. That's not Salamanca and it's not, nor has it ever been, the quality and caliber of the individuals that serve on our board, past or present. One of the things that I think makes our board exceptional is the fact that they are willing to engage in meaningful board professional development. So much so that on November 9th, we'll have a board retreat here. And there's at least two topics that we'll talk about. One is finance and some financial conversations, which a good board is always thinking about the bottom line and how Is always thinking about the bottom line and how we can utilize our resources. To help children and help our community grow and flourish, not just in the immediate sense, but in the long range sense. Uh, we'll also have, uh, Melanie Beardsley, uh, one of our attorneys, uh, who is going to do a presentation on, uh, for the board. Uh, some current and relevant topics that I think will help the board members. Understand the lay of the land and I'll get to one of those in a second. Uh, kind of is my, uh, last comment. Um, having the board grow in their knowledge makes our job easier. And I, I know that it's a commitment away from your family, away from your pets, away from your loved ones, away from your hobbies. Uh, but we are truly indebted and grateful for your service. So for that, I thank you. Um, the second item tonight on the agenda, there are a number of items. Uh, and in early November, I'll do a more formal presentation, but we do have a calendar. Uh, issue and on December fourteenth, uh, with the board's approval tonight, we will have a referendum. To purchase four properties on Hoist Street. Um, those properties touch Vets Park. Uh, and are the four houses behind the Dollar General on the right hand side of Hoist Street as you enter. Uh, and come in, uh, and turn towards Dairy Drive. These are important strategic properties for the district to further at a later referendum, just like when we. Uh, secure the rights to develop Vets Park. We have to actually. Secure the rights and the, uh, lease for those four properties and that vote will be on December fourteenth. On tonight's agenda, there are a number of resolutions. Uh, to identify that we have done a seeker and that is an environmental review and that there is no adverse impact. At this point in time for us to simply purchase the homes. And acquire the necessary leases from the Seneca Nation. Um, one of the resolutions is a necessity of acquisition, saying that the board believes. That this property acquisition is important to our long range interests and development as a district. One of the resolutions is to approve the acquisition. So that may seem a little bit redundant and it is, but we do live in New York State. So. Uh, those are requirements. Another, uh, resolution tonight is to approve a special meeting and vote. And then set the referendum calendar and then vote details. About the, uh, registration of voters and the, um, appointment of, um, poll. No, not poll workers, registration workers. Sorry. I knew there was an appointment. So all of those things are an important element. To set the table as you will, so that we can purchase the four properties on Hoist Street. And many will ask, what will we use it for? That will be a topic of a future referendum, but similar to other property acquisitions, it touches an important strategic property that the district maintains. Vets Park for the main campus. And in this case, it is, uh, right behind. Uh, the outbuilding and the basketball court for Vets Park. And future site development is being considered, uh, including parking or other amenities to the park. Uh, and this referendum, if approved by the voters. Uh, does not need a sixty percent majority like many of our referendums do. Uh, we're not bonding. So a simple majority will work. And, um. That will occur on December fourteenth and the purchase will not impact the tax levy. Okay. That's the vote. That's like pretty much most of item seven on the agenda. The other piece is regarding what Dr. Beeler had noted of testing. Um, we are required to, uh, secure testing for our employees. Who have opted out of the vaccination and I won't comment on either side of that discussion for or against. Simply to state, um, that we are required to move in this direction. We have partnered with Cataragus County. In fact, most of the school districts in Cataragus and Allegheny BOCES. Have partnered with the county, whether it's Allegheny or Cataragus and Affinity. Affinity is the agency entity that is securing the tests. And the county will administer and oversee the tests. The testing in Salamanca will begin next week, Wednesday. A letter went to staff outlining those, uh, responsibilities, including registering in the county portal to secure their spot. Uh, and at the high school, that will include the high school. Seneca Intermediate, Central Office, Transportation and Buildings and Grounds. Basically anyone who is not permanently assigned to Prospect Elementary School. So starting next Wednesday from seven thirty AM to eleven thirty AM, we will have a essentially a mobile. Testing center set up for individuals to secure their testing, uh, timeframe. And, um, each test will take approximately forty five to sixty seconds. They're allocating approximately ninety to a hundred and twenty seconds per registrant. Uh, so the county advises that there will be more than enough time to get our. Uh, staff that require testing, uh, based on the main campus. Numbers, uh, from seven thirty to eleven. Then they'll break down and they'll head over to Prospect from twelve thirty till two thirty. Or any staff stationed at Prospect can secure, uh, their testing. It is PCR testing, which is a low nasal cavity swab. The employee or staff member will self administer the test under the supervision of the county certified and county trained professionals. And there will be two, uh, test samples. The first is a pool sample. That will go into a, uh, vessel with approximately, uh, as many as twenty five other pooled samples. That pool sample will be tested. Uh, from an outside vendor that, uh, the county and affinity will secure. If those. Up to twenty five individuals are negative, then they won't test the individual samples. But if there is a positive result from the pool sample, then they will test the individual. Um, swaps. Uh, that way an individual will not know, um. If they are the individual that was tested and positive, uh, and the county will notify that individual person. So it, it will help maintain confidentiality. Um. It's important to note that while the testing is required. Employees are not required to participate in the weekly testing on Wednesdays with the county. They are free at their own. Uh, pleasure and leisure to secure outside tests or either their healthcare provider or a separate, uh, third party s- source of their choice. So long as by Monday morning, we have a verified negative, uh, test result for the individuals. Um, we are expecting and as Dr. Beeler has noted numerous times. We are hoping and planning and expecting good intentions. If an individual has a conflict, like they want to be tested. And they're absent on Wednesday, then we will work with them to find an alternate. This isn't designed nor intended. Or even practical to be punitive in any sense. It, at this point is a, is an important compliance piece to help slow and mitigate, mitigate the spread of the COVID nineteen virus. Um, I can't tell you today if we will have enough pool resources. If an individual wants to be tested, even though they had previously been vaccinated. That is something that we're working through with the county based on supplies, based on, um. Availability. We believe that we'll have more than enough of the samples and the tests. Uh, but we can't commit to testing people that have already been vaccinated. I believe we'll be able to do some, but we just, we aren't quite there yet. Um, most of the districts in CA BOCES are following the, uh, the same protocols, but they obviously have different days of the week. In which they're testing. Um. The last piece is, uh, regarding an issue that we are having, uh, not just in Salamanca. But across the section and I would say across the state and probably even across the country. And this is conduct. At athletic and sporting events. Um, there has been a noticeable uptick across, uh, athletics. Where either fans. Are vocal, perhaps maybe too much. Where that creates a safety issue. Um, we have had multiple conversations internally. Coach Bartoszak, athletic director Bartoszak, um, is working to create. Essentially a varsity club or honor society for our athletes to take a leadership role in this. Uh, we did have an incident at a modified soccer game where through a combination of unfortunate events. Um, regarding fan conduct, regarding supervision of, uh, spectators, regarding some, um. Athletic issues, not athlete related, um, uh, that dealt with some officiating and some. Uh, other concerns for safety. Our staff members did a remarkable job of making sure that everyone was safe and be healthy in the situation, but. Our athletes are telling us, our coaches are telling us that we need to step up our reminders of our fans. Or visiting fans of our expectations. And if they're unwilling to comply with those expectations. Then they will not be welcomed as a fan in our stance. We expect that the fans will let the kids play, the coaches coach, the officials referee and the fans cheer for every good play. That's our benchmark and we believe that that is an obtainable goal. Because we have had a long history of spirited fans, but respectful fans. And I just wanted to let the board know, the community know that the athletic department and particularly the athletes. Are taking point on this because I think it's powerful when students are telling their parents, mom, dad, I love you, please sit down. Um, and we want to make sure that they have an enjoyable experience. And we also need to make sure that we are doing everything we can to advocate for safe athletics. Including, uh, letting the section know when there are concerns about officiating or contests either home or away. And, uh, it's going to take everyone and their engagement to make sure. That our athletes have the venue in which they can maximally perform and enjoy their chosen athletics. Um, it is interesting to note that it's rarely. An outburst of the fans or the spectators at a concert. Um, so individuals can certainly display. Better choices while spectating. So. And that's it, question guy.
Well, thank you. Um, couple of questions on the follow up. Who is paying for the testing?
Uh, the testing is free. If they participate through the county and the affinity program.
And, um. As far as the testing goes, what is the length of time for the results?
Um. That's a really good question. Uh, minutes, really. Um, no.
I think it's at least twenty four hours for that kind of.
Let me just think. They will, they will send the samples out. We should have the results. This isn't a rapid test. Um, within twenty four to thirty six hours and projected, they'll test the in, the pool sample first. And then only test the pool sample if one of those samples does come back positive. So it's not the rapid fifteen minutes one.
Okay. That's what I was curious. You mentioned it was a PCR testing? Okay.
Do we have the opportunity as a district to purchase additional parts? Let's say if accident, personally. Has what they appear to be a science.
We have a small sample that we have purchased, I think around a hundred and fifty samples. We purchased them in August because when this rolled out. Um, our athletes had already started practicing. So we weren't sure if we were gonna have to test students. Um, so we have a small pool that Julie created, our nurse manager has in stock. So in an emergency. If someone truly needed that, we, we have purchased some. Uh, they're, I believe they're self administered.
These are not the deep nasal cavity swabs. I think the, the test, I'll have to double check with Julie. I think they may actually be, um. Uh, cheap. Or. Fly by administered test. I'll have to double check that. I'm not. So if we move into a self administered, who does the reporting? The lab that would test them. That's what I believe.
Who would have to send the results? That's a really good question. I'm not sure. Let me get back to that. If you would have asked it in August, I would have had a really fully command of that, but, um, I'll, I'll double check with Julie and I can, uh, shoot the board with that. Any other questions, comments? Concerns? All right. Thank you. Well, let's move on to item five consent agenda. Consent agenda. We resolve that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the consent agenda items of October nineteenth, twenty twenty one, including A. Board of Education meeting minutes of October five to twenty twenty one and B. Uh, nicer fall twenty twenty one executive leadership symposium, San Diego, California, ten twenty six, twenty one, ten thirty, twenty one. Mark Beeler, be approved. Um, do I have a motion to approve consent agenda? Motion by Brad, second by Dale. Uh, do we have any questions or comments? I had one. Mark, tell us about symposium.
Sure. And sir, is the National Center for Education Research and Technology. Um, it's a three part symposium. Um, that occurs throughout the year. In the summer, it was at Canandaigua. Um, the focus this year is on. Student centered equity based education and, um, change leadership. Uh, so. During this time, we, um, have an opportunity to hear from presenters, um, literally from across the country. On those topics, uh, over the summer, it was, um. The, uh, chancellor of education for Kentucky. Who spoke about, um, equity in a school setting and the strides that, um, Kentucky had made. Uh, and there are several other individuals that have actually led some of the work and that we've brought back. Bob and I were both at that, uh, over the summer. So I'm looking forward to reconnecting with some of the individuals that we met and hearing what some of the new information is. And I'll be happy to present to the board if, uh, if you'd like.
Awesome. Thanks for volunteering.
Certainly.
Any other questions, comments? All right. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Hey, motion carried.
Uh, I'm sick. Old business. Uh, we have some policies, uh, being resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent. And following a second meeting, the following policies be approved. One, policy seventy one ten comprehensive student attendance. Two, policy seventy one thirty one, education of students and temporary housing. Three, policy seventy two ten student evaluation, promotion and placement. Four, policy seventy two twenty graduation options, early graduation accelerated programs. Five, policy seventy two twenty one, participation in graduation ceremonies and activities. Six, policy seventy two twenty two. Diploma or credential options for students with disabilities. Seven, policy seventy two forty, student records access and challenge.
Uh, do we have a motion to approve the policies? Motion bar? Second Brad? Any comments, questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. Okay, item seven, new business. Uh, this is a lot of what Bob was already describing. Um. You do not have to read these. Wasn't going to. I'll, I'll read the subject. Uh, the first one, um. Salamanca City Central School District Board of Education, where's the resolution issuing SEQR negative declaration for purchases and leases. Of thirty two, thirty four Hoist Street, forty four Hoist Street, fifty Hoist Street, fifty two Hoist Street. Adjacent to the western boundary of that memorial park. Um. Understand a motion? Motion by Dale?
Second.
Second by Jess? Any comments, questions? No. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. Okay, B. Uh, this one is the resolution of the Board of Education of the Salamanca City Central School District, Cataragus County, New York. Adopted October nineteenth, twenty twenty one, specifying in detail the necessity for the acquisition of certain parcels of real property. Located in the city of Salamanca, New York, being thirty two, thirty four Hoist Street, forty four Hoist Street, fifty two Hoist Street. An aggregate estimated maximum cost of one hundred and sixty thousand for all three parcels. And fifty Hoist Streets at an estimated maximum cost of sixty one thousand. Including, in the case of all four parcels to be purchased, any underlying leases associated therewith. including, in the case of all four parcels to be purchased, any underlying leases associated therewith. Now entertain a motion.
Motion, second.
Motion by Brad, second by Dale. Any comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Obsteem? Motion carried. C. We have a resolution of the Board of Education of the city, Salamanca City Central School District, Ketteraugus County, New York, dated October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, authorizing the contingent acquisition by the district of certain parcels of real property located in the city of Salamanca, New York, being thirty-two, thirty-four Hoy Street, forty-four Hoy Street, fifty-two Hoy Street, and aggregate estimated maximum cost of one hundred and sixty thousand dollars for all three parcels, and fifty Hoy Street and estimated maximum cost of sixty-one thousand dollars, including, in the case of all four parcels to be purchased, any underlying leases associated therewith. Entertain a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Barb? Second by Dale? Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Obsteem? Motion carried. Okay, the last one on this is, indeed, a resolution of the Board of Education of the Salamanca City Central School District, Ketteraugus County, New York, adopted October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, determining that a special meeting and vote of the qualified voters of the district shall be held on December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. Directing that proposition shall be submitted to such voters at such meeting and vote, and prescribing the form of legal notice to be published for such meeting and vote. Entertain a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Jess?
Second.
Second by Barb? Any comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Obsteem? Motion carried. Okay, item E, declare surplus. Be resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, following item, the declared surplus be properly disposed of, be approved. One, drawing tables, six, eighteen by twenty-four inch. Two, drawing tables, twelve of them, twenty-four inch by thirty-six inch. Three, art room desks, twelve of them. All entertain a motion?
Motion.
Motion Dale? Second Brad? Any comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Obsteem? Motion carried. F, create positions and abolish positions. Be resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, and as a result of changes within the district, the following positions be abolished effective September twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. Six, FTE, permanent building substitutes, and be resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent and as a result of the COVID-nineteen pandemic, the following positions be created to work up to nineteen hours per week at the hourly rate of eighteen to twenty dollars per hour, effective October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. Five, part-time security personnel, and be approved. All entertain a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Barb?
Second.
Second by Jess? Comments, questions? I do. So Bob, explain to us why we're eliminating these six permanent building substitutes. Sure, I'll start and then I'll lateral it to Dr. Dealer. A meeting or two ago, we created these positions and these are, they are, while the title that we created was permanent, the idea behind this was we would have six full-time substitutes that would be coming to work on a regular basis every day that the students are in session, but not necessarily in the same setting, so they're not full-time employees, they're just working at the student schedule, coming in, so we have dedicated people. We believe that this will help us meet our sub shortage and the intent on item H is to put that at a preferred daily rate rather than create six additional positions. Dr. Dealer, how did you?
You did good, the intention was not to create actual teaching positions as a substitute. That would be relatively unprecedented and cause all sorts of issues with regard to like, what's their actual job? You know, there's no tenure track for substitute. The intent was to establish a preferred list of substitutes or daily substitutes that most districts would refer to as building substitutes or preferred substitutes. Those individuals who are still classified as daily substitutes but are given a preferred status due to the familiarity they have with the district and perhaps a particular building. So in addition to the different rate of pay, preferred substitutes are gonna be provided professional development opportunities and will also be given opportunities when positions become available. So the intent is not, and when it came forward, it was placed in a area of the agenda that made it look like we were creating positions as opposed to preferred status for our substitutes, which is now being placed in section H in the upcoming.
Tell us a little bit about the part-time security personnel.
Sure, so the part-time security personnel are, have arisen, not necessarily because we are hiring five more people at nineteen hours a day, but because we need more flexibility, so as opposed to many of these security guards are not working, I'm sorry, nineteen hours a week. They're working perhaps five hours a week, seven hours a week, many of them also have other full-time jobs, we have a few retired law enforcement individuals, but we also have several individuals who are using this as a part-time job, and that's really what we were looking for. We're looking for good, dedicated individuals who can provide security and safety to us when they're available. What that means is we need to have simply a larger pool of individuals, and especially with the changes that we've seen coming with some of our athletic events, the increased need for simply personnel or evening events at Betts Park, that pool just needs to increase. So we control the cost of this, which is sometimes a concern when we see the addition of five more personnel, by not necessarily managing the number of people, but by managing the number of hours. And what this number, the larger number of people does, is it allows us to manage the hours in a more flexible manner and meet the needs that we have, particularly on weekends and after hours with events like at Betts Park.
Follow-up to that, so what kind of initial training do we give these security personnel?
Sure, so many of our security officers come from law enforcement. Several of the less individuals that we've had have come from corrections officers, our sheriff deputies. One, most recently, is a retired New York State trooper. So they come with that sort of mindset as far as an understanding, not necessarily of law enforcement, but of protecting individuals and ensuring a safe environment. When people are onboarded, Mr. Haley, who oversees that department, will provide them training on milestone and Gallagher, which is our access control systems, our camera systems, they're provided all of the introductory training on conflict resolution, de-escalation training. They're provided access and understanding of how our communication systems work, so when there's an emergency, so let's say someone gets injured at five-thirty, which is one of those sort of odd times for us where we'll have a security guard on, but there may not be an administrator onsite and there may not be a coach, because perhaps it's right after practice but before game. The security guard is here, he can work with the individuals who might need assistance in one manner or another, and they'll know who to contact to get the help that they'll need. They can also manage a crisis to ensure it doesn't become an emergency, so perhaps manage the entrance and calling of, say, the fire department if it was an accident or an injury. So in addition to all of those components, we're moving toward a better understanding of the facilities and the fire suppression, not suppression, but the alarm system, so they can also manage the, sort of, many of the infrastructure components.
They also take a number of additional supplemental trainings, first aid, seizure, diabetes. They do the normal required harassment trainings when they're onboarded and they do those annually as well. So what about our building procedures, our district procedures, and also our code of conduct? Are they trained or briefed on all of that?
Oh, certainly, yes. So the code of conduct is our basic procedures that apply to any of our students, as well as really any of the adults that enter into the building. They, they receive the district code of conduct, they should have an understanding of what those procedures are. What were some of the other ones you mentioned?
I feel like there might be. I was wondering about our building, building policies, our facility policies, our code of conduct. Bob, you just touched on something, you said you're sure they're aware of it. That leads me to believe that they're not actually getting a training on our code of conduct. Are we actually sitting them down in the training and going through the code of conduct with them? Or are we leaving it up to them to read it on their own leisure and expect them to know what we're expecting of them at all of our events, our facilities, while we have kids in the building, things like that?
Sure, I don't know if I can answer that question to the detail that you're looking for. I can come back to you at the next meeting, or we can have Mr. Haley go through the training process. Either one of those, I don't have that granular of an understanding of the specifics.
Okay, sounds like we got a presentation in the next meeting.
All right. I'm up for two now.
There we go. Janet, mark it down. Okay, well, the reason why I ask is because this has been a topic that we've had many times about our security personnels that are in the buildings, so I just wanted to know, as we're looking at bringing on more, what are we doing to make sure that the expectations are being met? All right, any other comments or questions? Okay, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Obsteem? Motion carried. Okay, item G, scholarship, Big Thirty scholarship. Be resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education accepts and establishes one-time Big Thirty scholarship to be given in the amount of one thousand dollars to a Salamanca high school twenty-two graduate who meets the criteria that demonstrates outstanding qualities of leadership, dedication, team spirit and work ethic, with the recipient chosen by the athletic department, working with the guidance department, and that a letter of appreciation be sent, be approved. Entertain a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Dale?
Second.
Second by Jess? Any comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Obsteem? Motion carried. Okay, item H, substitute teacher, preferred daily instructional substitute. Be resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following rates be established for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. Preferred daily instructional substitute, one hundred and sixty dollars per day. All entertain a motion?
Motion, second.
Motion by Dale, second by Brad. Do we have any comments, questions? Just a notation, Janet, we just need to make sure that this gets in the listing for the reorganization movement, just as a reminder. Okay, give us one more follow-up on this again, just so we're clear on what's going on?
Certainly, so the, we currently have three rates of pay for our substitutes. We have a hundred and ten dollars for non-certified individuals who are daily substitutes. We have a hundred and forty dollars for certified individuals that are certified New York State teachers that are daily substitutes, and we have a rate of a hundred and sixty-five dollars per day for retired Salamanca teachers who come back to sub. One of the things that we've recognized through the analysis of our attendance system is that on any given day, we have at least six positions that are sub, that would require an instructional substitute that are not built. Meaning there are a minimum of six classes for the entire day that are not being taught because we don't have a substitute to teach that. They may end up in the library where they have study halls, we may have to pull teacher assistants. Sometimes there are upwards of twelve teachers throughout the district. We heard and have heard about the bus driver shortage across New York State. Fortunately, we have experienced that, but not to the severity as other districts. You are probably also hearing about substitute shortages. It's a relatively competitive market, to say the least. So what we have done in the past and prior to the pandemic is we really did a nice job, and I'll give credit to Penny Beatty for the work that she did to treat our substitutes with the dignity that they deserve when they enter into the building and come to us. We provide professional development to them. We onboard them in a more professional manner than many other districts, and we have methods of communicating with them that I will say is arguably better than other districts. To that credit, we found that we did not have a substitute issue as much as other districts did. So we believe that we were in a more competitive environment. What we're finding now is that we're going to need to increase, especially for New York State certified substitutes. We're looking to bring on people who are A, certified, and B, willing to, you know, have that sort of preferred status, meaning they prefer to come to us, we prefer to work with them. And if they enter that status, then they will be provided that hundred and sixty dollar an hour rate. When we look at the financials of this, this really does not accumulate or accumulate to much over the course of a year for these individuals. But when it comes to a certified teacher in the southern tier who says, I can go to school district A and make a hundred and twenty dollars, I can go to school district B and make a hundred and thirty, or I can commit to Salamanca and be there pretty much every day for a hundred and sixty dollars and be provided professional development that's gonna help me get a permanent job if that's what I'm looking for, and be given a preferential status, meaning they will be guaranteed an interview for a position. Our goal is to basically begin to arm team, so to speak, of future educators and pay them a rate that's more competitive and respects the work that they're doing with us every day.
Awesome, so the qualifier is this is a certified?
Absolutely. Correct.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Obsteem? Motion carried. All right, item I, consulting agreement, new EDU. Be resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the contract with new EDU to provide consultant services to help select administrators identify, understand and develop solutions to problems related to organizational climate, culture, morale and staff effectiveness, effective October one, twenty twenty-one through July one, twenty twenty-two, at a cost of twenty-six thousand five hundred and fifty dollars, be approved. And the superintendent be authorized to execute the agreement. Entertain a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Barb?
Second.
Second by Dale? Any comments, questions? Bob, give us a rundown. New EDU is a partner that we have been working with in the past. They have done some of the work that has gone into our administrative retreat regarding our social emotional learning curriculum. And they are working, in this particular case, to assist with exit agreements that we have talked, exited interviews with staff. Any questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Obsteem? Motion carried. Okay, item J, district special meeting and vote development calendar. Be resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education approves the attached December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one special meeting and vote development calendar. Entertain a motion? Motion by Brad?
Second.
Second Dale? Any comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Obsteem? Motion carried. Okay, the Board of Elections, Board of Registration Day, Special Meeting and Vote, and Board of Registration Workers. Be resolved that upon this recommendation of the superintendent, Salamanca City Central School District, Board of Education authorizes the district clerk to work with the Ketteraugus County Board of Elections for the intention to advise, assist, train and election services in district, but votes, elections and special votes for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year, be approved and be resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, whereas personal registration of voters is required pursuant to the requirements of section twenty-six oh six of the New York State Education Law. Now being resolved that the registration date for the school district special meeting and vote to be held on Tuesday, December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, be and hereby is established as November fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, between the hours of nine AM and four PM in the district clerk's office. A register containing names of registered voters will be available upon request to taxpayers within this district between the hours of nine AM prevailing time and four PM prevailing time from November sixteenth, twenty twenty-one to December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, exclusive of Saturdays, Sundays and holidays, at the office of the district clerk located at. Exclusive of Saturdays, Sundays and holidays at the office of the district clerk located at the district office fifty years old drive, Salamance, New York, one four seven seven nine. And now be resolved that the special meeting and vote be set for Tuesday, December fourteenth, twenty twenty one. From twelve noon to nine PM in the high school gymnasium. And now be resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following applicants be. And hereby are appointed as voter registration worker. For the school district special meeting and vote, budget vote, board of education election and voter registration days. And for any special elections or special votes for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year. Janet Hellicore, district clerk, current salary, Carmen A. Beckarella, nineteen dollars per hour, be approved. I'll entertain a motion.
Okay.
What's my Brad?
Second.
Second by Dale? Any comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. Okay, number eight, personnel consent agenda. Little May, we have personnel action, um. We uh two and certified classified resignations. Um we have certified classified retirements, two of them. Uh certified classified appointments, four. And one appointment for coaching athletics, team leader, co-curricular mentor. I'll entertain a motion. My red?
Second.
Second by Dale? Any comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. Introductions, there are no staff members on the Zoom or in attendance that. We have one retirement in attendance.
Oh. It was so much fun last time, uh I did talk, just uh so people understand. Uh I did have a conversation with the two uh retirement system and that my intended date of. Last day of work is June thirtieth. Having it be June thirtieth effective means that it's one less day, so. They advised changing it to reflect my last day of work will still be June thirtieth. And first day of retirement will be July first, so technical.
Okay.
We all do what TRS says, it's just better that way.
All right. Okay, item D, the confidential managerial contract with Angela Gani. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, confidential staff working conditions contract for Angela Gani. A co-clerk typist, effective November one, twenty twenty one through June thirty, twenty twenty four, be approved. And the superintendent be authorized to execute the agreement, be approved. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion Dale? Second Brad? Any comments, questions?
This follows our uh central office confidential managerial contracts.
The rate of pain was listed in the uh item A. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. Item nine, board information, reports and discussion, we have a bunch of second readings for policies. Uh we have a couple of first readings, uh transportation report is in there, I A C minutes are in there. Um. We have the New York S A S C S D newsletter in there, uh also upcoming events. Prospect Open House on the twenty first. Yeah, A C A S B meeting on the twenty eighth, and New meetings in Cuba. Um election day on November second. Personnel committee meeting on November four, finance on night, next board meeting is the retreat on November ninth. And there's a bunch of other ones on there, so. All right. All entertaining a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Motion Dale, second Jess, any comments, questions? Say, see us both tonight? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried, adjourned.